The February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting is now called to order. Uh, we do have item A today, which is administer the oath of office for newly appointed Planning and Zoning Commissioner Stacy Phillips. Aubrey?
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Stacy Phillips, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the city of Friendswood, of the state of Texas, and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state and the charter and ordinances of this city. So help me God. Thank you and welcome.
Welcome aboard Stacy.
Uh, item two, uh, we'll be, we will, huh, we will begin by receiving communications from the public. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects to be placed in a later regular commission agenda for discussion and our possible action. Uh, there's nobody in the audience, so taking it, nobody's going to speak. Item three, next is our consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless a commissioner so requests. In which case, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Item A, consider approval of amendments to Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting held on Thursday, January ninth, twenty twenty-five. And item B, consider approval of the Wild Pines Final Plat located at four hundred Fence Post Road. Um, item B does have staff comments to be discussed, so um, I'll go ahead and make them a motion to, uh, to remove item B from the consent agenda. Do we have a second? We have a motion to second. All, all in favor? Okay. Okay, is there a motion to approve item A on the consent agenda?
I move to approve.
We have a motion to second, all in favor? Oh, it's just, it's just, yeah. Okay. Okay Aubrey, you have the staff summary for item B, Wild Pines Final Plat?
Uh, yes, so, uh, you saw this one in the last couple of months as a preliminary plat, it's an eleven acre piece of property, just subdividing a residential property into two. Uh, we did realize they turned in their infrastructure plans and, uh, the right-of-way for the cul-de-sac radius needs to be sixty feet on the plat. Um, and it's fifty feet of pavement and sixty feet of right-of-way, and their plat is only showing fifty feet of right-of-way. But they have the, they have the correct amount of paving on their plans, they just need to adjust the, the radius of the cul-de-sac by ten feet. So if you could make the motion to approve that, or approve the plat with that contingency or condition, then, uh, we're good.
Okay. Um, we'll move to discussion, uh, start with Commissioner Anderson.
I have no comments.
Commissioner Bounce?
I'm still lost in the whole thing of approving with them going to do something, so I'd, that's why I hesitate.
Well, it's just, you're ju- you're just stating that, um, we're approving it as long as they meet the comments that have been provided by, by the city staff.
They bring it back when they're done, so we know that they've done it.
So if you put that, if you approve it with that condition, stop and make sure that it's correct.
Okay. All right, as long as, okay. Nothing further.
Yeah, I believe it'll be approved before we sign it, right?
Yeah, well, you'll see it when you sign the plat.
Okay, good.
Uh, Commissioner Rose?
Nothing here. Nothing here.
Okay, Commissioner Phillips? Okay. Okay, do we have a motion to approve with the, uh, subject to staff comments?
That was a motion to discuss before, right?
Yep.
Okay, I make the motion to approve with staff comments.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second, second.
Okay, we have a motion to second, all in favor? Motion passes? Okay, next to the agenda are our action items. According to the Planning and Zoning Rules and Procedure, all actions of the commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of a simple majority of the commissioners present at such commission meetings. Item A, consider approving a site plan amendment for Easy Mart located at forty-three twenty-six Friendswood Link Road to allow for the addition of a fuel canopy, six fuel pumps, and fuel tanks. Aubrey, you got the staff summary?
Yes, sir. Uh, so this is an existing convenience store that's been there for a long time, uh, on Friendswood Link Road. Um, the owner is proposing to add a fuel canopy, six fuel pumps, and the fuel tanks to the site. Um, they've gone through all the departments and got approval. Um, there was some challenges with meeting some of the requirements on this property because it is existing. Um, there's, um, utility easements where we would typically, you know, require landscape buffers and things like that. So I think we got it as good as, as we could. Um, so the, both sides of the property is, um, the tracks on the rear and the side are a zone, single-family residential. Um, so the in, the eight-foot landscape, or eight-foot fence and ten-foot landscape buffer applies. Um, across the rear of the property because there's utility easement there, they can't put trees. Uh, but they are, uh, upgrading the fence to an eight-foot fence. And then the fence down the side, uh, will be upgraded to the eight feet as well. And, uh, they crammed as many trees on there as they could. Um, the drainage on this was a little challenging because of the slope of the property and where the detention pond is located. Um, they're having to create some swells to direct the property into that pond and then outfall. Um, so where we, you know, would usually like to see trees all along the front of the property, unfortunately, that's going to be a swell to make their drainage work. Um, so, um, like I said, I think we did as good as we could. Um, and I, the applicant could not be here tonight, so.
Okay. Um, the applicant's not here, so we'll move to discussion. Uh, we'll start with, um, let's start with Commissioner Rose to stem.
Uh, I had a couple of questions I've asked Aubrey about. They have a sign on site that's not shown on their site plan, but I think we came to the conclusion that if they do anything with the sign or move the sign or anything, it's going to trigger them to have to come back to the city for a permit for that anyway.
Yes, the sign that's existing on the property is a non, non-conforming sign. Um, it's a pole sign. Um, it's not, you know, thirty feet in the air, but it's still a pole sign that's non-conforming. Um, so if they have to remove that sign for any reason, they'll have to get a permit for a new sign that's conforming with the current ordinances.
My second comment was about the, the wood fences on either side that are s- they're currently six feet. They say that they will be extended two feet to be an eight-foot tall wood fence. The city has requirements at eight feet that the fences be engineered for windstorm. So we want to make sure that they know that, uh, and comply with that. But I, I just saw a typo also, uh, on, I guess it's the north side of the property where it says, existing eight-foot height wood fence. That's an existing six-foot, I think it's a wire fence. It's not eight feet, whatever it is.
Oh, okay.
And then also they say C details on sheet C O two-two, and we looked and there, there aren't any details there.
Yeah, the C O two-two was the traffic control.
Other than that, everything.
Okay. Commissioner Bounce?
Uh, no, sir, I just think it's crazy to have this right here and you have this huge megalith of gas pumps right across the street, but, uh, I guess competition is good.
Uh, Commissioner Anderson?
Uh, no one's here from the public, but was there any concerns from the public raised?
Um, I didn't make phone calls about it. I think the difficult, they did have to do an H and H study, which is hydraulic, hydrologic and hydrolog- hydrology study because, uh, the addition that they're doing is in the floodway. Um, so they went, they hired an engineer and, um, got the letter, um, it has to, they have to get a letter from an engineer saying that they won't affect drainage upstream or downstream of them, um, with this development, so. They've been working on this for a while.
Also, I noticed, I think the trees were crepe myrtle, were they? Hmm? Were they?
Wax myrtle.
Wax, okay, and they, they acceptable?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Comrade?
What I see here is the site is to amend it from just the regular store to an addition of the canopies and the fuel pumps, uh, fuel tanks. Uh, so that's mainly what we are proving, right? Just to amend the type of site that we're going to have. Not actually to amend the.
Well, it's, it's actually a new site plan with the, uh, converting it back to a, a fuel station for.
So there was a fuel station there before with all the tanks.
I don't know how long ago that was though, but I assume at some point there was.
Okay, well, I, I didn't know that. Um, besides that, the fence, you know, knowing that it's a six-foot to an eight-foot, uh, and the trees, everything else. I mean, once all of that is, this is approved, then we still going to get the site plan back.
Uh, no, this will be the, this is the official approval of the site plan, yes.
Okay, yeah, I don't see any, any issues with it.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Phillips?
I don't, I don't particularly have any comments. I mean, I know, uh, I have a question about the, the tree. Oh, sorry. Yes, sorry, I have a question, well, I have a question about the trees. Um, on the type of tree. Um, I'm not really sure on a landscape screening that I would agree that that would be a sufficient buffer. That's just my opinion on that type of tree from my own particular experience. I don't think that those are going to be a very dense growing screen. Um, so I don't know if there's an option for something else. But I, I don't know that I love that choice on this plant.
They originally had different tree types and we did make them change them out because they were too big to be planted too close to the pavement and the utilities.
Okay.
Um, we have a list, a qualified tree list, and they get to pick from a variety, so.
Okay.
We could use your help in reviewing some of those requirements.
We do need to update our list.
I would, I would.
We'll put you to work.
I would welcome that. Um, I just, I just think that, I mean, for what the, what the intent is for this, I'm not sure that that is the best choice for actually providing a buffer to the residents around that.
Okay.
That would be my comment.
Very fair. Um, Commissioner Rose brought up a lot of good points, uh, I like, I like the comment there. Um, but I have nothing else to add to it.
Tom, I have another question.
Go ahead.
Okay, I, I have noticed on here that, uh, it says the fence, the existing eight, a six-foot fence will be extended to eight feet. Are they replacing it or are they just ex- adding two feet of a ugly piece of wood?
Yeah, that was, that was part of Marcus's, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's what we're trying to get down to, and we don't know the answer to that.
Okay, I'm sorry. And maybe ask words.
It's confusing, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, Commissioner Rose is looking for the detail of what that, uh,
Okay.
fence adjustment would be. Whether it's a new, new eight-foot fence or just tacking onto the top.
I guess I was asleep when you said that.
Well, I, I didn't say it in so many words. Essentially, what, what we came up with was, no matter what happens, they're going to have to get their windstorm certificate, which will trigger the, uh, the building official to look at that. And, uh, at that point, it'll be, he'll make them do whatever they have to do. But also, they'll probably go over that with their pre-build meeting as well.
Okay.
We think it'll be covered.
Okay. Uh, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, Commissioner Rose, do we have a second?
A second.
I have a question. If we approve it the way it is here, or approved with all the changes that we had a question about? Like the fence and so forth.
Well, I, I don't think they're changes, they're just questions. And I, I think that they will be taken care of
I think so too.
either before or during construction.
Okay, so, uh, we got a motion by Commissioner Rose to approve, Commissioner Bounce second. Uh, all in favor? Motion passes? Next to the agenda are discussion items. Item A, discuss proposed amendments to Appendix C zoning, Section Eight supplementary district regulations, subsection M, commercial activities and outdoor sales, and Appendix A, signs of the Friendswood City Code to amend and add provisions for temporary outdoor uses, currently known as outdoor sales permits and special events. Aubrey?
Yes, sir. Um, so this is going to be a lot. I'm going to try to walk us through and, um, get us through this as cleanly as possible, but, um, it's, it's going to be a minute. So, um, okay, so these are changes that we're proposing, um, for this outdoor sales and special events, uh, permits in the zoning ordinance. Um, this has been on our list of things to do for a long time. The way the ordinance is written right now is, um, not very clear. Um, so hopefully this will be a good cleanup. Um, hopefully make the playing field a little, um, you know, level for everybody. Um, but there, I, there are, the red lines of the draft was in your backup material, but we still do have some questions. And there's going to be some questions I'm going to ask to get some guidance. Um, once we have the kind of answers or guidance on these, then we'll take another stab at drafting this ordinance. Um, and then depending on timing, we may discuss it again before we can av- but we'll have to advertise for a public hearing, uh, make a recommendation, and it'll go to council for public hearing and consideration to change the ordinance, um, you know, finally. But, um, this is just the first step. The, uh, subcommittee, the ordinance subcommittee has seen it. Um, it's been through a lot of staff hands. Um, so lots of suggestions all over the place, so hopefully, um, like I said, I can kind of walk us through these changes and, um, get some guidance tonight. Um, so, one of the, at the very beginning of the section, uh, there was some proposed changes regarding, so this whole section is called Commercial Activities and Outdoor Sales. Uh, one of the proposals is to ch- to change the title of the section to Commercial Activities and Temporary Uses. Um, and that will come into play here in a minute. But in paragraph B, um, there's just some clarifications that we need to make for temporary construction structures. Um, so just, sometimes, um, contractors use temporary construction trailers, uh, for subdivisions or big commercial projects that may not be platted yet. Um, and so this is just cleanup to allow temporary construction structures to be placed on sites that have been legally platted or to allow them to be placed on undeveloped sites upon city approval of infrastructure plans. Um, and the redlined part that's marked out is the part that doesn't make sense. Um, so this will clean that up, and then also in paragraph C, just removing that sentence. Um, temporary sales structures are usually temporary trailers used by home, uh, home builders who sell in the subdivision. So usually they'll take one of the lots at the front of the subdivision, put a trailer in like four parking spaces on that lot. Um, to act as a home sales lot. Um, so they can do that on a platted lot. Um, the part that's marked out says may not be placed on site until improvements are accepted by council. That's kind of a moot point because if a plat is recorded, um, the in, the improvements have been accepted by council. And then it says, or in the case of developed sites where improvements exist until a permit is issued. Um, like I said, if a plat is record, uh, our subdivision ordinance requires a plat to be recorded before we can issue permits. So that sentence is just, um, just needs to be removed. Um, so paragraph G of this section, we're, we just relocated it to the very end under exceptions, um, so that's why it's redlined there. Um, so then the new, uh, section two, um, change in that title to temporary outdoor uses. Um, so this kind of gets into some of the, um, more significant changes. So currently there's, um, we have what we call outdoor sales and we have special event permits is kind of the, the wording that we've used for permits over the years. Um, kind of want to get away from determining, um, what people are actually, like, what you're selling to determine what type of permit you're, you're needing. So the idea is to change the wording and just do, it's temporary outdoor uses and you have a thirty-day permit option or you have a four-day permit option. Um, so a thirty-day permit option is intended for the sale of holiday merchandise such as pumpkins, uh, like pumpkin patches, Christmas tree lots, um, the flower tents. Um, H E B and Kroger relig- religiously get their point, permits for the tents that they put in their parking lot because they're taking up required parking spaces. Um, so they get their permits so that we're aware, you know, what they're doing for, it's usually Mother's Day and Valentine's Day, um, is when they do those. Um, the pumpkin patches, we have had a few of those over the years. Um, so those thirty-day permits would be allowed for thirty days. Um, in paragraph A, under number of permits, um, the last sentence there, the permits, whether for a short-term or long-term temporary use, shall be issued a minimum of thirty days apart. Um, I think we can do away with that sentence. Um, can we go to the next slide? Okay, yeah. So this kind of puts the thirty-day and the four-day permits like side by side. Um, so the purpose, the limit, um, so the limiting, uh, the idea is to limit the outdoor sales or thirty-day permits to three per year. Um, we would not want to allow food trucks at those, um, for those uses because we don't want food trucks out there for thirty days or four weekends in a row. So, um, and you don't need food trucks to sell pumpkins or Christmas trees. Um, and then, so the thirty-day, um, separation between those, I, I think we can remove that. Um, we would leave the part in there, there is a little sentence that basically you can't overlap the years. So it's per calendar year, so we would want the whole event permitted in one calendar year and not overlap. Um, and then the hours of operation. Um, we didn't really change anything on that one, but, um, the, that was a copy and paste from the ordinance already. But the last sentence in there, I think we could probably delete as well because it says that any activity permitted on Friday, Saturday, or Sunday immediately preceding Thanksgiving shall be effective from that date until twelve midnight, December twenty-fifth. Um, typically, I think the thirty-day limit is going to take care of that. So I think it's kind of a moot point. Unless y'all understand that in a different way. Um, so on that section, if y'all are okay with, um, uh, removing that last sentence of A and not requiring the thirty-day separation, and then the last sentence of B. If I can get head nods or comments or, okay.
I think that's.
Okay. Okay. And then, so then we'll go to the four-day permits. Um, so these are four-day permits intended for short, shorter-term temporary uses include but not limited to art and craft shows, festivals, fairs, grand openings, church bazaars. Uh, we would allow food trucks as part of these events. Or temporary uses, we're not going to use the word event. Um, the number of these, um, we have it four per calendar year currently. Um, and it does have a thirty-day separation between these two as well. I, I think we've kind of talked about it and we think we should do away with the thirty, thirty-day separation of these two. If an owner wants to do, you know, summer events and do May, June, July, or June, July, August, um, then, you know, they should have that purview. Um, so we could remove that last sentence of that. The bigger question is the four permits per year, like for temporary outdoor uses per year with food trucks. Do we think four is reasonable? Should we go to six, eight, ten, twelve? Um, any thoughts on the number?
I mean, we've had four before and it's worked, right? So it's.
We haven't had a limit on this, and that's one of, the special events right now does not have a limit, and that's part of the reason why we're making these changes. Um, we, we would like to limit them somewhat. Um, we just don't want food trucks, you know, sitting permanently on properties or repeatedly, um. So honestly, I think six a year would probably be a reasonable number as well, you know, after thinking about this more. Um, so you have six times four, it'd be twenty-four days per year. Um, they could have.
I like the six idea just because I think if it's any more than that, it, it almost starts to feel permanent. I know, I know there's reasons behind this whole discussion, but I, I feel like that's a reasonable number. Just personally.
And I'd, I'd agree with that.
Anything beyond that, I think. Touching around food truck parks and things like that.
And there.
It's my two cents on it.
Yeah, there are some, like, activities, like, if a, you know, and I, I think I do need to kind of beef up the definition of this whole section as well. So the intent is if you're taking up required parking, if you're inviting other vendors to your property, if you're using off-site parking or facilities for your event, um, and if you're having tents on your property, um, then those are the things that would warrant the need for a temporary outdoor use permit. Um, other than that, like, there's business promotions and things that businesses can do that, you know, they don't necessarily need to get, you know, our approval. I mean, you can invite people to your property and, you know, have business activities, um, outside of this as well.
And would you mind telling everybody, we do have provisions for a food truck park. Nobody's done one, nobody's developed one. There, there is that option too.
Yes.
If somebody's dead set on always having food trucks out, you know, they're welcome to develop food truck park.
Yes, yeah, that isn't allowed use. They would re- provide, you know, parking spaces for the trucks, uh, parking spaces for patrons, uh, restroom facilities, probably a drink station, uh, you know, sitting area or common area for, you know, you could get food at any food truck and sit down and, you know, enjoy your meal. Um, so that isn't allowed use. Um, and we've had one proposed, you know, in the last five years or so, it just didn't come to fruition, so that concept is available.
The, uh, so regardless thirty-day or, or the four-day, whichever one, but, um, and I, I know I asked you before, but can I forget the answer, but, uh, what, do we have, we have a set allowance for a setup and breakdown of those events outside of that thirty or forty, or thirty or four-day window?
Um, so.
Like you must have it broke down within a day of the event, or?
The thirty-day one requires the perme- perma-te to remove all items, tents, materials by five P M. The day after the final date of the permit.
So they get a day?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, if they're, if they're doing a big, because I, I assume those tents probably take a couple of days to set up, right? So can they get a variance on that?
Um, I mean, if they have a permitted event and they start setting up like the day before, we're, we're not going to,
Okay.
we're not going to stop them. And if they start putting out the week before, we might say.
Well, that's kind of what I'm concerned about, right?
Yeah.
So.
Which, so the four-day has the same sentence that they must remove all items by five P M. the day after the final, so we could add, let's see. We could add some setup time in there.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. Allow them to start set up the day before. We can add that. We can add that. So any more thoughts on four or six?
There's just one question. If there's inclement weather that prevents these things from happening, is there any sort of relief that the person gets? For example, if someone says they got a permit and then there's inclement weather, they can't hold it, does that essentially become a non-event?
If it's canceled because of weather, we can allow them to reschedule because they wouldn't have actually held the event. So we could allow them to reschedule.
Yeah, I did, I did the last event permit I issued. She called and said she's not going to be able to do it that weekend and could she move weekends? So we just have her email the permits desk, that way we have it in writing that the owner asked to change it and we just reissue it free of charge.
I don't know if he does, but would it be appropriate to let Mr. Matranga speak on this if he'd like to? Just give us your, any thoughts you might.
You're welcome to ask anybody in the audience.
I didn't necessarily want to put you on the spot, but I would honor your opinion.
Karen, do you agree? You guys are saying that just the great, the right things. I look at this and I, I tend to think that, you know, four is maybe too few because we really don't have a set limit right now on the four day permits. I like what y'all said, that, that six seems to be a good compromise. That doesn't mean it has to be six forever. Could be six and we see how it works out. It could, they could go back to three. I mean, I'm just saying, it, it doesn't have to be forever. But it seems like, that to me, I, that seems reasonable to me barring any other further discussions or I, I get more education on this topic. But I do think we need, definitely need to do something with it. I'm glad that it's on your agenda and I look forward to the discussions at council as well. Because there is some confusion by some of the, the commercial operators in Friendswood. And so I, I think it bears, and I appreciate, bears, bears refining and defining things and I look forward to seeing what you guys come up with.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Does anybody have an issue with setting that at six for now?
No.
Sounds good.
Yeah. So the next, let's see. Then we go on to the application. So the applications for permit, for permits for either the thirty or the four day must be submitted a minimum of thirty days before the start date of the temporary outdoor use. Complete applications will be granted or denied. A minimum of seven business days before the start of the temporary outdoor use to allow the adequate, the applicant adequate time to promote the temporary use. And then it has a list of the application requirements. With the thirty days ahead of time, we have other people that do permit their special events way ahead of time. That gives us basically the same timeframe as site plans and plaits to allow some time for back and forth if we do need clarifications or anything on the application. It'll give us, you know, seven days to review it, give the applicant seven days to address any comments and then hopefully we could issue it, you know, hopefully more than seven days ahead of time. But seven would be the minimum. And then the application requirements, I think it's all pretty basic information. Okay, let me, just for slide purposes. So go back up one. I'm jumping around a little bit in the red lines because I was trying to consolidate slides. So the application requiring to submit thirty days advance will issue the permit. And then farmers markets, we consolidated some of the submittal requirements from farmers markets to be consistent just with all the events in this section or uses. And then we added that food trucks are allowed during the operation of a farmer's market. So that's included in here.
If you, if you don't mind, right there.
Yeah.
I would just like, the thing that I learned through this is that you can't, you cannot just say that we're going to have a farmer's market. So there, you actually have to be registered and as a farmer's market, just to clarify that for everybody.
With the state, right?
It's a, state has regulations, they defer to the counties, the health districts to permit and regulate them. But yeah, there are stipulations on what you can sell at a farmer's market. It can't be like craft and resale items and that's actually in our local ordinance as well. Because we don't want people selling rugs and, you know, so like, you know, the vinyl or wood ornaments or, you know, vinyl tee, or, you know, T-shirts. That's, that kind of stuff is not allowed at the farmer's market. And I think our farmer's market's pretty stringent about what they allow, fruits, vegetables, you know, food items and things like that.
Their baseline for that is it has to come from the earth or something of that nature.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that. It's not, it's not like Krogers could just decide they're going to have a farmer's market next weekend.
Right. You have to have a, a sales tax certificate as like an actual agricultural company or food, you know, organic food vendor, that type thing.
So charitable and nonprofits, in the ordinance right now, they're exempt from even getting permits, which is not really what we want. We want them to still get permits. We will exempt them from paying the fee. If it's a charitable event, obviously we don't, you know, want to take money away from a good cause. So we will exempt them from the fee, but we still want to know what they're doing. Okay, next screen. So these are the application requirements. These are probably going to need a little bit of refining. Basically, your name and contact information of the person conducting the activity, your proposed location, the property owner information, description, dates, proof of insurance, a site plan showing all activities such as tents, temporary structures, food trucks for the four days, restrooms, parking, trash receptacles, and any other pertinent information. Lighting plan if required by section two A one B or two A two B, which basically says it's under the hours of operation. Your event has to end at ten PM or sunset unless you give us a lighting plan for the safety of the attendees. Flame retardant certification for tents if applicable. They're not required for the ten by ten tents, but if you have larger tents, there are certificates that are required for fire marshal. Written authorization for use of offsite parking if applicable. A copy of the activities, sales tax certificate. And we have caveats in there that we can waive any of these requirements or we can ask for more if necessary.
So what about noise considerations, right? If somebody wants to have some sort of concert and they're fairly close to a residential neighborhood, that could be concerning, right?
We're not issuing noise permits anymore, right? Because we can't, yeah, we, so these, your event has to end at ten, which is the same as our noise cutoff. We can't issue noise permits to allow people to exceed our decibel requirement. So they have to end the event in a ti, like at the same time that a noise ordinance would be in effect.
The other, the other thing I was going to say for the others, because I, I was in the prior discussion about the food trucks part is that just so you guys know that those are permitted by the county. And, and from what we understand, they, they inspect those things fairly regularly at events. So it's not, it's not like they just issue a permit and they go do their thing. If you had any concern with how those are permitted, that's, county handles that.
Yeah, if you can go to the next slide, I do, so a few things in the draft. So a security agreement with police officers, the traffic control plan and the janitorial cleanup and service agreement and or plan. Those were under the farmer's markets only. Like I said, we just consolidated the list, but we got to thinking like, which, and we can do a deeper dive into this. I called Parks this afternoon, so because they permit special events that are on city property. And they require a police, a police officer if you have seventy-five people or more or if you're serving alcohol, like even if you're having five people, the alcohol's being served, you have to get a police officer. They, the officers are eighty-one dollars an hour now. So they're getting some pushback on, you know, that requirement. So I will, I'll do some more talking to the police department and see like the enforceability of this even like on private property. This may be one of those things, maybe we take it off of this list and just kind of keep it in our back pocket and ask for it if it's warranted. The traffic control plan, the same, like, I mean, if it's, so let me jump to the bottom, the additional thoughts. Asking for the number of people planned for attendance, this is one thing that Parks does and I know that's been beneficial for them because they even ask like how you're going to advertise an event. Because they had an instance where an entity permitted an event in the park and it was going to be a small event. Well, it turns out they were advertising it on the radio station and like all of our social media and it ended up being a much bigger deal, like and an impact to the park than what was originally thought. So their application, you know, process is very detailed now. So I think it would be useful to ask for the number of people, like if you're planning on fifty to a hundred versus five hundred, I think that makes a difference in what the information we would ask for.
I think that's, I think that's significant. I think, I think you should.
Okay.
Would you need to break that down though also to any given time? Do you think you're not going to exceed fifty people at one time rather than four, over four days?
Yeah, yeah, maybe we could. Yeah, like maximum number of people at once or something like that.
Yeah, because that's what all that's based on.
Yes.
Presence and all that.
Yeah.
Would it be, maybe getting ahead of the.
No, you're good. Asking if alcohol would be served, that might kick in some requirements, but I think it's a yes, no checkbox. Like I said, they're, our downtown district is a dry area. We're not sure how special events affect that. Might be something else we need to look into.
So part of the tra, sorry, part of the traffic control plan, is that is that going to dictate whether they need officers at the intersections to let people out or that type of?
Yeah, so I think that again.
Because you have, you have officers to man the event, but what about like, you know, egress and?
So if you're having your event completely within your property and you can account, like if you're doing it in Captain's Corner and, you know, you have all the parking on site, then I, you shouldn't need a traffic control plan. But if you're using offsite parking, if you're shuttling people, if you're, you know, have an Uber station, which has happened, then I think you do need a control plan. So I think that's one of those things, like it depends on the scope of your event, whether or not we would require that.
Just a, maybe an odd question, but if you're having an event and you want to have an officer say blocking the egress lane, do they get a permit for that or how do they?
They have to hire them and pay for them.
But, but how do they, like you can't, somebody just can't stop a road, so what's the process they go through for that?
They would have to go to the police department and hire off duty police officers.
So it's all taken care of through the police department?
Or like I think maybe some security, but I, I think most of the time it's through the police department. Off duty officers. Food trucks have to be registered or licensed with Galveston County Health District, and Marcus mentioned that, so I think we should add that to the list just for clarity. Requirements from chapter thirty-one of International Fire Code. So there is a whole list of requirements. Becky can expand on that a little bit. When an applicant goes to apply for the permit, there's a list in our permit portal. We didn't want to put it in the code because that list could change in the code and we don't want to have to come back and change this every time. So the thought was to just include the reference to chapter thirty-one of the International Fire Code. And like I said, we, we try to keep the list updated on the permit portal. Do you want to maybe remember what some of those things are?
Right. It talks about fire extinguishers near generators, generator extension cords, the, the tent certificates, the flammability certificates, which chapter thirty-one of the IFC is geared more towards, you know, the massive concert they had at the old Astroworld and that type thing. That's, that's the big huge list of all the stuff that the fire marshal could possibly want. And so depending on the scope of the event, the temporary use as we were, now call them. You know, you may need three or four of those requirements or you may need fifty of them. So we originally started drafting it into the ordinance and then the fire marshal pulled back and said, just reference the code because when the code changes, we don't want, want to have to change it in ten different places. So that's kind of where that the city can waive or ask for additional requirements depending on, you know, the magnitude of your.
Well, I mean, we've seen that, our, our other reviews of ordinances, right? We've seen where we've had information that had not been updated, which should just be a reference to another, another place, right? So I think that's best.
Yeah, when we do cleanups, we generally try and pull out the tiny specifics and put the more generic code in there. When we're talking about fire code, building code, plumbing code, because it changes every three years, five years.
Yeah, I like that.
Can I piggyback on that?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Would there be any benefit to having basically a disclaimer saying that you still have to comply with all the city ordinances, codes for your event?
There is, when you do our online permit applications, there's that tiny print page that you hit on every website you hit and it does say, if we missed something, all applicable codes, you know, still apply. So that it, it's for any permit you pull.
I had Karen's back on that one. Put a checkbox on it.
The janitorial and cleanup service agreement and or plan, that was another thing. It's just on the farmer's market list and it kind of made its way to this one. But I, you know, further thought of that, like, I was thinking maybe we should reserve that one as a, if it's multiple properties that are involved in an event, maybe we require that. But if you're just having an event on your property, we shouldn't have to tell you to clean up your property. So that's something else. I was just trying to kind of whittle down this list a little bit, so it's not quite so much.
Do we make them provide proof of liability insurance and vehicle insurance?
Liability insurance for the event, yes. Yeah. Good suggestions.
Any other comments?
Like I said, this is going to be, we're going to still massage this a little bit. So if anybody thinks of anything afterwards, this consumes your brain like it does ours. Shoot us an email or a text and, you know, we can. I know it's a lot.
Very good.
So the applicability of these changes, so permits issued in the same calendar year of the effective date of this ordinance shall be subject to the limitation on the number of allowable permits for the calendar year. So if we say six and somebody's already permitted four, it counts towards their six for the year. And then exemptions, so outdoor displays of merchandise, there is an allowance, like, you know, Kroger and HEB, you know, sometimes put Christmas trees or flowers and that on their sidewalk, out in front of their building. As long as they're taking up less than half of their sidewalk and not blocking ingress, egress, then they're allowed outdoor displays of merchandise, so that does not fall under this.
That's their, their sidewalk in front of their building, not the city's driveway.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you for that. And then the suspension of the rules by city council in the event of a natural disaster, that's that paragraph G that was moved from the very front to the very end. So it applies to the whole section. If for some reason we, you know, had another flood and we wanted to allow all the businesses to put food trucks out, the city council could, you know, waive this requirement and, you know, we could allow more food trucks or something. And then these rules are not applicable to the city. Parks Department has a separate special event process that they use for Parks. And with all the, they have multiple users that use that property. So, you know, we don't want to limit ourselves on the number of events or anything because there are multiple users of that public property. The next thing is signs. So in the sign ordinance, what we. So in the sign ordinance, uh, what we call bandit signs or temporary signs are prohibited period. A lot of the users use the little bandit signs to advertise for their events. So we did want to allow for some way for them to advertise. So we were proposing to add an exception to the sign ordinance to allow temporary signs to advertise for a permitted temporary outdoor use, which would allow signs to be placed on the property where the activity will take place. And it could either be one thirty-two square foot banner or six bandit signs, two square feet or less. The little, the bandit signs are twelve by eighteen is the typical size for the ones with the metal stakes, um, so.
I may be confused here, but on the, form, the summary, it says four square feet. And then on the paperwork, it says two square feet.
Yes, it was four.
Okay.
And I changed it to two, because I looked up the size of those little bandit signs. And like I said, they're twelve by eighteen. So if we want to do four, we can do four square feet.
No, no, I just, I saw there was one that said four and one said two, so I just want to know which one it is.
Yeah, sorry for that confusion, yeah. Like I said, just reviewing it, I went down to two.
Okay, good.
Uh, we were talking like A-frame signs would be cute too, like if you wanted to use A-frames, um, you could reuse those.
I was just gonna ask you some, because you mentioned that the other day.
Yeah.
But do we consider that A-frame a bandit sign or how does it fall under?
It's temporary.
It would be considered a portable sign in our current code. If it's a hard movable structure, it's a portable sign. If it's the flexible fabric, it's considered a banner, which is under the temporary signs, and you can have one or the other. But nowhere do we currently allow the, the little bandit snipe signs, but those are the ones that these events use, you know, they put the little stakes out in their yard. So we were trying to, like, put it in there so legally they can actually do that. But this was kind of one of our up-for-discussion ones, you know, how many signs should they have?
Six.
Should they have?
The, the A-frames, I mean, those can look nice and like a lot of this, the nice small towns that you go to that the stores have them out in front, right?
Which, I mean, we could maybe try to figure out a way to get that in there too, just as an option, I mean.
Yeah, it's not called out specifically in our current code, the A-frame signs.
Yeah.
I'm not saying it necessarily has to be called out, but I'm just, really the part of that question was, is it, is it, does it fall under a bandit, bandit sign?
Which if they're.
No, it would fall under the portable that we currently have. But those are limited to, um, twenty-one calendar days a year, that's just for your normal, whatever it is that you want to advertise. So this would be in addition to your normal advertising allowances.
So where do those fall into? If you have a shop and you have a little A-frame sign right by the front door that just says, welcome, come in.
We don't regulate those. But if you're gonna stick it out on the curb, then code enforcement will politely ask you to remove it.
Which I guess the only dangerous thing about those is that they're not attached to anything. And if you're putting them out, like on Friendswood Drive, if one ended up in the road or something, so maybe we should stick with the little wireframe ones. You can use the A-frames by your door.
You, you have on there allowance such a property where the activity will take place, so how does that affect if you have a parking agreement? The adjacent property, can you put the bandit signs out there?
That's a good point.
Yeah.
No, we need to add that in there, that way they can put their signs for additional parking for the event type thing.
Yeah.
But I think there needs to be some restriction on that too, so there's not twenty signs.
Right, well, that's, that's kind of where we're trying to get, right now, you technically can't have anything. We want you to be able to have stuff, but we don't want it out of control either.
Yeah, because if we're asking for your parking plan, so if you have written authorization from those property owners, then you could place signs at those places that you have written authorization, I think we could do that.
Yeah, and if we allow six signs, figure you do two, three, four on your property and two or three on the other property.
So we still haven't done the six though, right?
Does that seem reasonable, more or less?
Unless you have just like a huge piece of property or something.
I know, like Stanfield will put fifteen or twenty out there, but it, it's just an attention grabber, like you, you're like, oh, something's going on. But I think you can only read like one or two of them. But I think Tom had mentioned maybe like one per linear foot of your lot frontage or if you have two street frontages, like.
I think Marcus brought that up.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if they're too close, you can't see them, so.
We do have provisions in other sections of the sign ordinance for, you know, if your property's less than two acres, your sign can be sixteen square feet. If it's more than two acres, it can be thirty-two square feet, it's meant for like those big construction signs, but, we could add something for linear frontage if that, maybe kind of like how we do the, um, the multi-tenant monument signs? If you have more than, you know, four hundred.
Or if you have more participants, like you could allow.
Some extra signs or something.
Yeah.
But then you'd have to define participants, wouldn't you? Because then you have your shop owner plus the food truck.
Well, I was thinking like if you had, like, three properties that were participating.
I know, I'm playing devil's advocate.
Yeah, no, 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 I appreciate it, believe me.
Yeah, Aubrey and I have been staring at this too long, it just, none of it makes sense to us anymore, we need outside eyeballs.
But also, we're getting to, you get to the point where now we're, we're getting to do more calculations and worrying about.
Yeah, well, and our code enforcement officers unfortunately would be the ones to enforce this, so I, we need to keep it, keep it simple as well.
I say we keep it, keep it simple and start here, and if we need to adjust it later, we can.
Okay.
Just, I, I mean, besides the, the change that Marcus, uh, had mentioned about, uh, you know, if they have a, a parking agreement, being able to use those, I, I say, I, I, I agree with the same count of signs, just them being able to have a couple of signs on that other property.
Yeah. Which I think we.
I don't know how you'd word it, but.
Yeah, we can, we can work on that, I, I made a note, we'll definitely add that. And that was part of the reason why, you know, Gary, like, I guess guaranteeing that the permits would be issued at least seven days ahead of the event so they can have time to put these signs out and advertise for their event. Uh, I think that was all on that item. Was it too painful, right?
Any, anybody have any further comments on that? No? Item five B, discuss proposed amendments to Appendix C zoning, Section Eight supplementary district regulations subsection one, landscaping and screening requirements of the Friendswood City Code to provide additional flexibility for the commission to consider adjacent land uses, land uses when determining required landscaping and screening. Aubrey?
Um, yes, so basically this is just reorganize, it's not a lot of changes in wording, it's just reorganizing. This, um, is a result, there was, council had discussions a couple of months ago, maybe January, December, I think it was January, about considering an option of an appeal process from not just planning and zoning, but boards and commissions in general. To be able to, like if, you know, people don't agree with the decision, that they could appeal to city council. Some boards and commissions do have an appeal process already. We didn't want to put, you know, historically, we haven't wanted to put council in that position, council sets the rules, like the legislative body, and then we carry out the rules. So it, it's always been, you know, if, if the rule needs to be changed, we need to change it for everybody. So that's how we've handled things, so we're gonna continue to handle things like that. Council did not adopt an appeal process, so part of that is, there was a specific topic that kind of spurred that discussion. So, um, one of the proposals was this, just giving the Planning and Zoning Commission a little more latitude to be able to consider, the, the very last sentence of that has been in the ordinance, but it was at the end of another paragraph, and so it looked like it just applied to that paragraph. But making a, a statement on its own gives you latitude to that whole section. So this is just a reorganization of the language, so that very last sentence is just the commission shall determine the required screening after giving due consideration to the intensity of the commercial use, the zoning clas, classification and adjacent land uses. So basically, if an owner, you know, if it's in the ordinance this way, but he's like, well, or he, she, you know, you know, this is next to my property, then it at least gives them the opportunity to bring it back to you and present their case, and you can consider, you know, their justification and be able to make a decision with that. And for, like, we've told them, you know, the commission made their decision in accordance with this ordinance, you know, it's written this way, they can't do anything else. So it was kind of a dead end, so this will open that up, um, to allow them to come back and discuss with you.
I think that's good. Anybody have any questions, concerns about that?
That sounds good.
Becky, anything? Next on our agenda is communications, and we'll start with item A, review the commission's to-do list for 2025 established at the annual retreat on December twenty-fourth, 2024. Aubrey?
So this is just a kind of a spreadsheet that we, uh, keep track of. We had our annual retreat in December and, um, have some things that we need to be working on. So there's, a copy of it was in your backup material, um, just kind of wanted to get it in writing for you. And, um, if there's anything that I missed, please let me know, but we'll just keep working on this list through the year.
Thank you, Aubrey.
Do we need to take another look at the committee assignments?
Uh, we, we, we will need to, yes. Aubrey, I guess we'll talk about that before the next meeting. Yeah, we'll have to totally realign.
For the, yeah, ordinance and planning, uh, subcommittees, yeah.
Good point.
I was just confused, so.
Item B, announcement of the next planning zoning commission regular meetings scheduled for Thursday, February twenty-seventh, 2025, and Thursday, March thirteenth, 2025. Item C, city council updates from our liaison council member, council member Matranga.
Well, again, good evening. So council had two topics on our last agenda that I think related to planning and zoning. One was the rezoning of three eleven Laurel from a multifamily medium-density zoning to downtown district. That was approved by council, thank you for all your work on that. And then the second was a unanimous approval of Stacy Phillips as our new commissioner. So welcome, welcome to planning and zoning. So that's, that was it for, for us, unless you have any questions of me, or I'll be here afterwards if you have any questions then.
Appreciate it, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we will continue with communications, uh, from our commissioners. We'll start Commissioner Phillips.
I don't think I have any additional comments.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Conrad.
What about my name?
Yeah, lost my, lost where I was going.
I'm good, I don't have anything. We had, we did have a subcommittee meeting with Becky, and I think we ironed out a lot of things, a lot of questions. Maintenance on the warding and things like that, but I think it was, uh, quite, uh, we accomplished, I think, what we wanted to do along with Willie.
Very good. Uh, Commissioner Rice.
Nothing to add, welcome, Commissioner Phillips.
Uh, Commissioner Bounce.
Welcome, Commissioner Phillips, and, uh, thank you to all the support staff, everybody, Katie too.
Commissioner Anderson.
Uh, just welcome, and also I'm, I'm curious to see, uh, progress that we've made as far as, more of an outline of how new members, new commissioners can come up to speed quicker. So I, I'm curious as to, as to what we can do, and I think the new members probably can also contribute to. What was it that we learned, six months later, we probably should have learned, you know, earlier. So I, I look forward to any improvements that we can have that would benefit you in, in your adjustment, your transition to the commission, so I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
We, we actually talked to Aubrey about a few of those things, uh, before the meeting, so.
Okay.
Going over the, a lot of us got the original big book when we started, now it's all online, so, possibly running through that system so everybody knows where all the information is. And, uh, there, there's a few things that I think we can do to improve the process. And welcome to the group, glad to have you aboard. And, uh, that's all for me. And city comments, uh, Aubrey?
Uh, I don't have anything, just, uh, welcome to Stacy, and, um, we will get some, we kind of had a few items come up for training ideas, so we will get those, um, on the agendas here soon.
Uh, Becky? Okay, and, uh, Karen, I'm losing track of everything tonight. Okay, with that, thank you everyone for attending this evening, and the February thirteenth, 2025 planning and zoning regular meeting is now adjourned.